So then why don't we start with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, very good. Well. It being a special night, having our student representative here, I'd like very first thing to just welcome you in.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for showing up. What, can you tell us your name?
I'm Amrielle Lucier.
Amrielle Lucier?
Yeah.
Okay, and what year are you in, Amrielle?
I'm a junior.
Okay. Thank you. And what did you do wrong that it made you? So, thank you for doing this. Okay, we're gonna have a session for you to introduce yourself in just a couple of minutes. And again, thank you. So are there any changes to the agenda? I don't think, I don't think we have any tonight. Okay, very good. The live district calendar. So. Let's uh. Let's take a look. All right, now.
Alright, um, so again, CHS has a lot of information up on the calendar. They do have an open house later this week. There's a fall concert the following Thursday. We have open house for GGS, the thirteenth. We had the RMS open house last Thursday. We have our PTA meeting, the middle high school. So, post-secondary planning night at the high school level. We have harvest fest. Still waiting on a little bit of information for that.
Okay, so having this up, what? What's gonna be our goal? Do we have anything on here that? We as board members want to particularly note or be involved in?
I had a question about the ball concert. I saw the flyer, but it didn't say whether there was any admission or tickets required or anything. Did it show up? I don't know.
I have not heard anything about admission at this time. Yeah, typically the concerts that are musical in nature, you know, this chorus and the band and so forth, they're usually free. It's the drama performances that have. Ticket costs.
What is the harvest festival? Do we know anything more about that?
I don't have any. Details, other than I know that they had, they did their first harvest fest last year. It went really well. The community was very excited about it. I was not able to be there, so I.
Who is the, like, who's running?
Student council, mostly.
Thank you. I was hoping you'd say, hoping you'd know, so tell us more.
Um, well, right now, we don't really know. We're still in the planning process, but I will definitely bring you back more information once I know a little bit more about it.
And is it an interact or a club or what's, who's, who's kind of heading it?
Well, student council is planning it and getting most of the activities together, so.
I'm Lisa, by the way.
Oh, nice to meet you.
That's really cool.
Yeah, sometimes the middle high school will put an event as like a placeholder on the calendar, like, like they'll set the date, but there might be. Usually they'll say more information to file, follow. They just wanna, they wanna be really proactive and at least letting people know that things are happening. But if you guys ever see something on the calendar and need to know more information, just reach out. We can get that for you.
Okay, and just somebody may have already answered this question. I just missed it, but the fall concert. It's at seven PM on the thirteenth, and where, where, where will that be held? Or in the, in the frat?
I believe in the frat.
Uh huh, okay. Yeah, there it is. Right, very good. Okay, thank you. And then does anybody else have any questions about any of the other items on the calendar?
Well, something that's not on the calendar, I think pretty sure it's in October, is walk to school day.
Yes, that's right.
I'm trying to find that date.
Believe it's the nineteen.
That's what I thought it was.
As a backup date.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was waiting for confirmation from somebody on that. That would be a district calendar ad, because all schools participate. I'm just waiting. Obviously, if you guys on the law office committee say it's good to go, then. It's, you know, good to go. I just need the information to add it to the calendar.
It was, it was in the Eagles Nest. The last, latest issue of the Eagles Nest had the RMS.
Okay. Okay.
Good, so that's, that's something I think we can add, and I know there's a meeting on the sixth to talk about the details. So, waited this week. Okay. Very good. See. Or, okay, so. Moving on. So, public comments, one. Nick, a few minutes ago, you didn't have any members of the public fair. Is that still the case? Okay, great.
I guess for the sake of normalcy, also go through the little spiel, public comment policy is up on the screen. If you're remote, first, last name, town of residence, as long as you're a Jaffrey, a red resident, adhere to policy in order to speak. Use the hand raised feature at the bottom of the screen to be addressed if you choose to make a comment.
Very good.
I'm not seeing anything right now.
Okay, so. If there is nobody to make a comment or interested in making a comment at the moment. We'll move on to that, and we'll put the student representative on the spot again, and again, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having me. Um. I think that having. I'm saying a congratulations to the homecoming games for winning, like, that was pretty good. Um. Oh. Um.
That's good. That's good.
And now you said you were a junior.
Yeah.
Very good. So this is a big year for you. Do you have a lot of classes? You taking any advanced placement classes or anything of particular interest to you?
Um, I'm currently in chemistry honors right now. With Miss Rolke.
Great. I bet that keeps you busy.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts on the, on the new Otis program?
I personally don't really like it, but I think that's mostly. Because of the fact that the teachers don't really understand it enough to help the students learn to understand it better. Because like with classroom, if we'd have been using it for so long that if the students had a question, the teachers. Prob, like, there was a good chance that they knew the answer to our question, and I feel like the teachers didn't get enough training time with it to be able to efficiently help the students understand it better.
Thank you.
All right, let's go. Yeah, very much. Well, I have a question or two. Relating to our procedure here. I know that we are pleased to have you. We look forward to. You know, trying to pick your brain, so to speak, about things like what you just said, but also. We have some meetings that go fairly late, and we don't wanna make you stay here until nine thirty at night for. You know, things that really don't concern you. What? What do you think the procedure should be or how, does anybody have a? Put on, how we can make this a pleasant experience? For student.
Oh, I think Amrielle should be here for the entire. You know, I think a couple of things, you're on the basketball teams, there's recent times when, you know, you'll have to. Skirt out of here to be able to go and either play or even practice and things of that nature, and. So that'll be through the winter time, what we can do, but coming here with. You know, some items that are important for the students, what the board, you know, or, or the community to know would be good. And then, right after. You speak, I get a chance to provide some information as well. Some of that might be of interest to you and to people that you would go back and speak to at the student council and so forth. So, some of it, it's just more like, you know, interesting, you know, Mr. Duncan, but that doesn't have anything to do with me, and I would just say, well, I had to listen to you, so. So, that's kind of the idea. We go through after the. I mean, the, the schedules are more or less the same every single time, and so we go into a consent agenda, which there's a little bit of a conversation about. What is in there sometimes, sometimes there are resignations, sometimes there are. Items where people are hired, budget transfers, things of that nature. So, if you have any. Interest in that, you don't vote on those right there, but if you look at the agenda and you are interested in any of that, I think during the timeframe, it's not, it's, it's okay for you to ask and say. What is student services, you know, wanting to spend fifty-five or fifty-two thousand dollars on? What is that? So that you have an understanding, and that's perfectly. Fine. And if there's anything of interest that you see on that agenda that you're like, oh, I, I have to get going, but I really wanted to be part of that. You can always ask the board chair before the meeting, you know, this is a night area of interest, and the board can have a conversation about that. And maybe move the item off. So that you can, you know, that might be helpful.
And, and we'll make sure to try and get you a printed copy of the agenda, so you have it in front of you. It's on the screen.
If you bring your Chromebook as well.
Yeah, I can bring it.
Yeah.
Next meeting.
Right. So I noticed that on, in the consent agenda, what's nice about that is we can improve a whole bunch of things all at once. And we've got about two million, six hundred thousand dollars worth of manifest items there. Which, you know, conveniently, we don't have to go into too much detail about, but if you have any questions.
Okay.
You can ask, yeah?
Yeah.
And. Yeah.
Also, we often have policies for reviews. They might wanna look at those and see if you have any input to those, because they, they could affect you.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, that, that could be the process. If you see something that's of interest to you, or do you think other students would be of interest, you know, interested, and you can. Ask us about them.
Yeah.
And then the last thing would be if you. Want something to come before the board, that's just a conversation. You can always connect with myself, with Mr. Handy. We'll discuss that with the board chair when we're trying to be done together. So you're thinking like, you know, I've, we've talked about. Otis, right? We've talked about Otis, and the beginning of the year seemed like maybe the implementation's a little clunky and so forth. But by the time, you know, I don't know, the second, second, the, the middle of next semester. Is it still clunky or something like that? You might wanna report on. Yes, it is, and why is that? Or, wow, things have really come along since the beginning of the year, and so I want to report that, and that this is, these are the benefits, or these are the drawbacks, you know, to it. Or any other topic, for that matter.
All right, very good. And, and again, if there comes a point where, you know, you feel like there's nothing more on the agenda for tonight that you really need to stay for, and you'd. Like to leave your. You didn't do that, just give us a little nod and say. Great. Well, then that's gonna bring us to the superintendent's report. Which is always.
So I have a verbal report tonight. Next week, go to the Kidder Law Conference. This is something we've spoken about here. It's one of the better. Professional development sessions that are offered here in New Hampshire for board members, for superintendents, for anyone who's. Running a building or organization, very helpful. You also get an opportunity to talk to some of our attorneys that, and meet them in person, or the first time I met a couple of them that I have been talking to on the phone, and. It's, it's kinda neat, so I think a couple of us are going to that next week. As mentioned already, homecoming was, I think, a success from what I understand. Not only did all the teams end up winning on Saturday. I think so. One was the girl soccer game went into overtime as well, and then the winning by one, and the field hockey, girls' field hockey, one by one. The boys soccer team ended up winning by a few goals, but. The, I got a picture sent to me, a text from Ms. Lindstad later on that evening. That showed a trophy in our middle school girls' field hockey team, ended up winning first place in the Milford Jamboree. True.
Oh, cool.
So I thought that was really neat that that was all going on at the exact same time. I think they had played on Friday and Saturday, and so. And I don't know all the places that participated, but I would imagine that it's. You know, big schools, small schools, medium schools, and so that's, I think that's really fantastic. We had a nice article in the paper last week, I think it was on Thursday. It was highlighting our partnership with Franklin Pierce University. So, I thought that the article was factual and. Did talk about several of the benefits, and it was good. If you haven't seen that, I do think it's still online, but I do know a favorite copy of that as well. They interviewed some of our teachers, some of the students that are within the program. One of the professors or a couple of the professors over at FPU, myself, and. And also, at the same time, because we do want this to be a long-lasting program. The head of the department over there and myself were working on doing a designing study, so we wanted to. A portion of a study for the next three years, but want, you definitely wanna a three-year longitudinal study on the work that we're doing, so to show. The cool things that are happening within Jaffrey range, but also just to add to the field of education as well. The Jaffrey revitalization group is. I, I don't actually know a lot about the committee, who is on it. I do get emails sent to me or forwarded to me, and so I have signed up to be part of that effort. I had signed up. To be part of that effort on the first time around, but they had tried to schedule it, so the dates on that are October twenty-fifth and November tenth, so I imagine it's kind of some visioning and some planning and so forth, so. And it has a little bit to do, I believe, with some of the planned work that we've talked about with the roundabouts and so forth, and see what we can do to. Improve the downtown, as the name would suggest. Then. Talked about the open houses and so forth. I would say just the last thing that I'll, I'll mention tonight is that we have quite a few things going on. We've. Passed the multi-year plan. We need to do some updating on that already, and we'll talk about that in the, in the month of common at the Goals Committee. But it is policy that I give a state of the district address a couple of times a year, so. Will be, Nick and I have already talked about how to go about doing that, and the best way to do it, so we have a little more planning to do before putting a date, but probably in November. Before we get into the budget season would be the timeframe that we think we'd like to do that. So, we have some really positive things to certainly provide to the community, as well as to, you know, some items that we need to alert people about, so. And then. That's about, that's about all I have for right now.
Great. Does anybody have questions about anything? That will be traced. Well, I have just one comment. I'm glad to hear that you're. Going to participate with the downtown revitalization. There was a meeting of the. Consultant working on the roundabout. I believe it was the week before last, and that meeting was. Here in Jackery at the fire station, pretty well attended. And one of the questions that was raised by members of the public, not me this time, although raising and passed, was. The question of whether the crossings should be controlled by these. Stutter lights, blinking lights that come on when students approach. Or in any pedestrian. And the feeling of the consultants at this point is that they're not necessary. And they, they make kind of a good case, however. There doesn't seem to be any other roundabouts that they knew of that were really equivalent to this roundabout. And there's gonna be two roundabouts, specifically talking about the one that's gonna be at the intersection of where the right is and. The, the, the main. Intersection two, two and one twenty-four. What, what's different about this roundabout is that it's going to have a large volume of traffic, because two oh two. At. Is, you know, busy times in the day, in the morning and in the afternoon. We'll get a hundred cars through there in, you know, less than five minutes. And. Although there are other roundabouts that are similar in size, or that are single lane roundabouts. None of them that the consultants could identify have been designed to handle that volume of traffic. So, one thing that might wanna have on your radar, throw this out as a suggestion, is. Whether or not those controls that are currently planned are gonna be good enough. And. Consultants reasonably think that they are, but nobody's a hundred percent sure, and.
Yeah, I would disagree with consultant. I think from the very beginning, I had spoken about the fact that they should have some sort of alert mechanism out there. That's, that's not a, that's not the safest intersection right now. You throw continuously moving traffic on there, you're gonna wanna have some people to be over, and I think that also having, I think, with a storm. Metters had made a suggestion regarding. Some roofed or. I don't know what you call it, kind of textured ground near where the beginning of the sidewalk is for people who, for ADA compliant purposes. Anyone who might have a visual impairment, be able to understand kind of where things begin and where they are not. I think that would be helpful. But more so, I'm not saying lights to stop traffic and, you know, make, and cause a bottleneck or anything like that. I think just to alert that people are there. That's for adults. I know it's, it's very helpful when I. When it's darker in the morning time. And people are walking, and I'm driving, let's say, on West Street in Keen, someone hits that light, it alerts me immediately that someone's on the side there. And that's not even, that's not a very busy location, and that's a very straight location, so you're talking a much busier area. You certainly have kids walking during that timeframe. It just makes sense, especially during the winter months, when it's darker in the morning time and in the evening, that you have something that's gonna alert someone to at least pay attention.
I think you make some excellent points, and I think the consultants are very interested in. This being successful and safe. They're convinced that it will be, but as I said, they can't really point to another. Situation where that volume of traffic will be going through. Especially as people become more comfortable and busier times of the day, those cars will push through there pretty aggressively, perhaps. At least that's what I've seen.
In other places. With the way it is now, traffic is used to come to complete stop. So we come to a complete stop. I know that there's. When they're on a, trying to do a hundred cars in five minutes in a single lane. All right, with the purpose of which is to slow down, because that's what the engineer told me, and we wanted to slow down. For safety purposes. There are gonna be some, like you said, some pretty aggressive drivers trying to get through there. Because as the minute you put lights out there and try to get someone to stop for pedestrian traffic, you're gonna start backing up those hundred cars. I don't know what the answer is, but. I think we do need to focus very hard on it, especially the times when school starts and the schools, it's out. Because it puts some people in a lot of danger.
Interestingly, the consultant at least believes that. When schools letting out shouldn't be much of a problem, because the volume of pedestrians will attract attention and slow vehicle sound. He fears it might be more dangerous.
Smell children will slow the cars down.
Yeah, well, you know, and, and again, I have to give some credence. That they have actually studied these things and that they, you know, are sincerely thinking about, but.
I would agree to some extent that when you see a large quantity of people, a large number of people walking down, that you would be alerted to it. But that's the point of alert lights, in that when that is not the case. People are not, I mean, that very answer itself says, yeah, if you have large quantities, numbers of individuals out there, then yeah, you don't need it, because. They kind of take over and they're, they're there, but when you have two, three, one individual.
Right.
It's not.
After school. And that's just hours. You have kids.
Yeah, but now, now they queue up for the light. And then they all go across together.
Yeah.
So people can, because the opportunity to know that when that light turns red, they stop. This isn't a situation, you got a flashing light going there, or no flashing light, worst case, you got a flashing light. And kids are trying to step out into the crosswalk, and people are saying, well, I'm gonna get across that crosswalk first, you know?
Or, or you even mean to do the right thing, and you just don't see something that happens, and it's, it's actually. It's, yes, it's safety for the pedestrians. It's actually. I, I think very much so respectful to those driving. To give them a heads up.
So anyway, this is a good time to be alert to that, because they are trying to finalize their plans this, this year. And then construction starting following you. And thank you for participating in the revitalization plan. It's a great opportunity to post. Gotta get that cafe downtown somehow.
Yes.
I noticed it was a new restaurant. And don't know anything about it, but, next to the Park Theater. All right, well, thank you, Ruben, for your report. And then we have the consent agenda. Which includes manifests, resignations. Budget transfers, lots of budget transfers. Field trip approvals. Meeting minutes. And acknowledgement receipt of the stipend list.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Seven. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Charles. Are there any questions or discussion?
Just that I'm so happy to see that field trips are happening again.
Now, do we have one or two board members?
Daisy and Kim and all, so we do a real call.
Okay, and, and do we have? Do either of them have minutes that they? Were not here for?
Are you asking me that question?
Oh, yeah, I, I actually, Kim and Daisy both, well, all of us really, but. I just want to make sure we need to have.
I don't. I guess I'm not sure what you're asking. You're asking if I've been here for what minutes?
It's the September nineteenth minutes.
Oh, right, right. Uh, no, I think I was there.
Kim was there. I don't think Daisy was. Okay.
Right. Okay. So Kim, you were there.
Yeah.
And Daisy, I think you were not. Is that right?
Okay, see that you're unmuted, Daisy, but I can't hear you.
Okay. So then we should remove the September nineteen public and non-public minutes from the consent agenda. So.
I will amend my motion to to remove the non-public and public minutes from September nineteenth from the consent agenda.
Great. Thank you.
Sir.
All right, very good.
So you made an motion out to prove the amendment.
We'll go back and do that.
Okay.
Do the other one.
Okay, so shall we do the roll call vote? I think we're I think we're ready for that. Kim and Daisy, as long as we have you unmuted, why don't we start with you?
Hi.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Kim.
No, that was Daisy, but I'm I too. It's okay.
Thank you, Daisy. And Kim?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Charlie.
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
And Christine?
Right.
And I say hi also. Okay, so that passes six zero zero. And that's.
Now I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from the public and non-public September nineteenth session.
So I believe it was this Paul here.
Paul.
Sorry. Six zero zero, just six zero. Okay, okay, let's think. Great. Good. No, it's good. We've got to keep each other straight. And Lisa, thank you. And do we have a second for?
Oh, second.
Second, thank you, Christine. So all right, this one I'm going to start with you, Charlie. Roll call vote. All right. Christine?
I.
Lisa? Kim?
Yes, I.
And Daisy?
Daisy can't. That's why we took it out.
She abstains. Right. Okay. And I vote I. So that passes five zero one. All right.
I would like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended. I'll second that.
All right. Very good. So Charlie?
I.
Christine?
I.
Lisa?
I.
Kim?
I.
Confused, but we know.
And Daisy?
Hi.
Okay. And I vote I also. So that passes six zero zero. Okay, thank you.
For the first motion was to pull the minutes out. The second one was the vote for those minutes. Once they were pulled out. And the third motion was to approve all of the rest of stuff without those minutes. And the reason for that was because a person, one of the board members wasn't present during that September nineteenth meeting. So she would not be able to vote on minutes in their accuracy when she's not there. So that's frequent that that gets pulled out into the agenda. Like I said.
Thank you for that explanation. We've been doing this for several years. It still confuses me, so.
Ruben, I could have used those explanations when I was first starting.
Oh, well, it's more fun to see people just kind of squirm.
No, no.
Okay, so item seven, discussions, the district handbook. Ruben, are you gonna?
Sure. This handbook, we, the board has approved for the last couple of years. For years, we didn't have a district handbook. Kathy Bootop, when she was the HR manager here, put the first one together a few couple of years ago, maybe it was the eighteen nineteen school year, maybe it was in nineteen twenty one. She had done some work on it prior to her moving on to another job. And then, of course, we had a gap of time. We had to make some adjustments on this because a lot of COVID language was in there that no longer is pertinent. So if you read this, you'll see some markup version. This is a markup version for you to look at. We also changed some names because we've had changes in principals and vice principals. That's mostly down toward the latter part of this document because Title Nine, which is another change that we've alluded to in there because we do have a first reading of ACAC. And I, so we've changed it with the anticipation that by next time we'll pass ACAC as well as this district handbook, which will allude to ACAC as opposed to the other two policies that ACAC is replacing. So all the same topic. But that's where a lot of the changes took place was in the Title Nine Sexual harassment and grievance process toward the latter part. So the majority of it's the same. That's what it has been.
There were changes to respect the shared contract.
Yeah, because both of these contracts, all contracts or agreements have some language in there about benefits and so forth. So this is a one stop shop for the basic understanding of what everyone has within their contracts. So there is some direct language from the changes within the contracts.
Okay. Well, great. Thank you for that update. Now, will we be?
Seeing it again next time.
Okay.
And then hopefully for a vote. Yeah.
For a vote. Okay. And similarly, the CTE agreement.
Sure, the CTE regional agreement, basically, we had talked, oh gosh, months ago, about the fact that the Department of Ed was not viewing us as an ATC or CTE site. We got together with the other communities that we are involved with, that were partnered with in this area, and we wrote a letter. That letter was responded to. We are going to be considered a site and up for being able to do some renovation work, seventy five cents on the dollar, I think, within a couple of years. So we will, you know, the facilities committee is going to have to start looking at this a little bit more closely, but we, as even all three schools, school districts, Conva, Messinic, and and our school district, we're going to have to look at exactly what it is we want in totality. But the commissioner, in the letter that came back to us, gave some suggestions, changes to this document that he and others would like to see, really making it clear the separation of the sites or the individualization of the sites so that they are actually all considered sending and receiving centers. So Jen Kylie, who is the director of the CTE, has taken a first round kind of crack at this. They are having an attorney review this a little bit. So this is not a final document. I would not want you to vote on this right now. I believe by the next time around, we will have something that is marked up that it will be very similar to this, but probably change a few words here and there, just to make sure that it's nice and nice and clean. And we'll bring that back. And once that is all set and we provide that back to the Department of Ed, we should be entering the conversations as the next steps of what we want to do for any renovation that we want to see for our portion of CT. So so.
So that will come back the next time. Yeah. So essentially, we appealed the termination that we were not full members and the state agreed, but they did ask, if the document be clarified in the future. Okay, thank you.
The next bullet is, I'll just do that as well. Review of the reopening plan. We, I had consulted with some other superintendents around the region and throughout the state. There was a general consensus of not needing to have a reopening plan per se. However, if we receive federal funds, SRF funds, one, in talking with the with Carrie and her, she goes to business administrator conferences and so forth. Just a reminder that we need to have it up on our website regardless. Needs to be there where it's visible and people can see it. So and that every six months, during the time of having these funds, we have to go over it. So we have to talk about it every every six months, which actually we've been doing. So we have minutes to that end. So I feel pretty good about that if we were ever to be audited. That being said, we want to put it back on the site. We took it off because of confusion. We didn't want that to happen. So I think that we'll probably take a crack at writing a few things that would be, I I think in line with our practice right now, that really wouldn't be COVID related, but more about using technology and education and maybe what we've already talked about. If people have questions about COVID, they can go to a specific website on the CDC to find out what the recommendations are. And then, of course, if you add any point in time, because we've always probably more so than most places, we have reviewed this and changed it. And we have a whole log of changes and the dates and everything that has happened. So we've been very thorough about that, which has been great. Nick's done a great job with that. But if we ever did need to tighten it up a little bit because, you know, the health the health of the region and the local environment is compromised, then we could certainly look at that as well and just add to something that already exists. So we'll be bringing something light next time.
Okay, any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, thank you, Ruben, for the update on that. And let's move on to policy approval. We've got two policies, ACAC and EBB that are here for the first reading. And I guess EB Environmental and Safety Program. I guess this is the first reading, but there's no board review necessary. Is that right, Lisa?
It is. So ACAC is pretty strictly from the School Board Association and Lawyers. It replaces two policies that we have. So we're getting, so this is something that's a mandatory required. And so we need to move forward on that one. The second one.
Just just once added, the other two policies will be removed from a policy.
EB, if you wouldn't mind opening that up, please, Nick?
Sorry, what was that?
EB. So the second one, this is basically a date renewal, and we're about to come across a bunch more of those. Many of these have not been, if not looked at, have not been noticed noticeably updated. And so basically, this is a date change. There's nothing in this to change the policy. This is exactly what we want to be saying for this one, and it's accurate for current everywhere. We just want to say, yep, we've reviewed this and changed that date from two thousand five to twenty two.
So so we're acknowledging that it's been reviewed.
Yep.
And just as a side of my add, I had a meeting today regarding the Joint Loss Management Committee. We kind of rethinking how we can get people to join that. And so it's hasn't been the same participation since COVID took place. And so we have some strategies for that. And then the crisis management plan, actually, with with several other plans are all in process of being updated or redone right now.
Ruben, that's been always, at least for me, a very confusing term, the joint loss management. Can you explain what that?
Yeah, joint loss primarily is concerned with the safety of the facilities. And so minimally speaking, they have to meet four times a year. We are really trying to shoot for once a month. The first of those would be for training purposes for new people as to what we're looking for. The last one being, let's look at all of our work this year. How did we do? Let's look, did anything get overlooked or whatever? And then everything in between would be the group going to a school and splitting off and taking a specific location and looking for are there wires all over the place? For instance, is there are there ceiling tiles that need to be replaced? Are there items stored underneath staircases? So what are the, what are some violations or if not violations, some suggestions as to how to make things better so that it's less likely that someone's going to be injured in an area. It could be in this building. Past findings, for instance, we're in very good shape now, but past findings have been chemical storage. So did we have the right type of chemical storage? Yeah, restored. But maybe we didn't have the proper cabinets that needed to be, you know.
Insulation.
Yeah, exactly. So you look at those sorts of things at all of the schools. And then a report is made when there is an inspection, the team makes this report, gives it to the each school and their each school's administration team or other individuals within the school. There could be a committee within the school that kind of even just looks at this, goes and works on these and addresses these areas. That's what's supposed to.
Okay.
This one directly actually ties to the traffic changes happening. And specifically says that the principal should be looking at the traffic changes happening. Is that something that I mean, is how if we want to say in the kind of lights and the kind of action that happens at this traffic circle that our kids are going to be walking, do we need more of a representation? Do we need a stronger representation from the school? Basically, this is saying the principal, but I don't know. It's.
It's a great question, Lisa. And I I think that one of the things that happens to a committee like this or any including this school is that there's so many things on our plate that it's easy to have something that's going on externally of interest, but not fully focused on. This is probably the time we need to focus.
Sure. No, I think so. I think Susan, because I'm fairly involved and David, I think, takes this policy. And actually, you would see a lot of the signage and so forth that has been put out there. That's specifically based upon this and then conversations with the safety officers and fire and police in town and their suggestions to make sure that on campus, the traffic flow is a certain way and making sure the buses go a certain direction and they're not intermingling with the with the cars as they used to a few years ago. So but it does talk about procedures used on school buses, which I guess you would say, you know, buses could be anywhere in the community at that time. So why not focus on the actual walking to school?
One thing that I'm, not that I need to give the principal any further jobs, but I believe that he lives in Keene, if I'm not mistaken, or okay. When we were talking about the rotary, the roundabouts, and they, and John, you had mentioned that they were having a hard time finding examples of something that was of this magnitude for, that I could think of, a handful of Keene rotary reason roundabouts that deal with, especially around Keene State and that have all kinds of features to protect the students with.
The the features are there. What's what's different than what I was trying to point to is that this is sort of unique in terms of it being a single lane.
Yeah.
Roundabout and having a large volume of traffic.
Yeah.
Like, for example, in in Keene, there's the one in Marlborough Street, and that's two lane roundabout. Also, it doesn't have the volume of traffic. Two oh two.
Right.
Especially at busy hours. The roundabout on twelve down near Winchester Street. And that has a huge volume of traffic, but that's a very big. Down near Winchester Street, and that has a huge volume of traffic, but that's a very big.
And not so many pedestrians.
You're not gonna have many pedestrians going in that area.
Right, no, right. So and you can find other, like going around the state, there are other places, single lane. Roundabouts, they're just not the kind of volume of traffic.
You know, it is interesting, however, if you look at that specific one, uh. Which has an incredible volume of traffic, that the large one.
Yeah.
Um, and they do have the crosswalks and so forth, the people who do try to cross that area. It it they they have a difficult time crossing that area.
Oh, yes.
Uh, so you're talking about something that has just as much or could at times have just as much volume of traffic. You know, in in Jaffrey. It's it's a bottleneck down there right now, so just imagine all those people moving.
Yeah, it it's not a bad idea to ask the principals to. You know, again, very busy people with many responsibilities, but this is kind of a once, you know, one time. Task, it's, so like one of these committees has a short life. All right, well.
All right, so the reason that we have EB as a notice one is because of EBV, like one coming up next on our agenda here. So this one, we did make some changes to, and, uh. This came up. In part because of the response to, um, the Valby shootings. Um, that happened, then we're looking at, um, what our responses to our safety measures need to be, and so we started. You know, really reviewing and looking closer at what we wanted to really, um. Make sure our policies stay unequivocally. Um, so this is something we brought for, I think, is this a first reading or a second reading on this?
The first reading.
First reading, okay.
Yeah, for instance, here. Like number two, training and education programs, I I can't see it now. Um, I can open up on my screen. Number two, training and education programs address the safety and supervision of students during school hours and school sponsored events training. Yeah, all, a lot of these are training and education programs, support for students and so forth, so, uh, this is an example. This year, we've had. The police chief come in several times and work with our staff here, but I also believe that. And Emery, I'll correct me if I'm wrong, I believe he was here. Working with all the grade levels last week or the week before, well, he was definitely with the juniors and seniors the last time I saw. Uh, Chief Meele and Bird.
I don't think I was here that day, I think I had an appointment and got dismissed, so I was not at that meeting.
But there was a meeting.
There was a meeting, yes, I was told about it.
Yeah. So, um, and it appeared to go over very well, and they were having very frank conversations. Um, so I was, I thought about our policy work as that was going on, when, yes. The Institute of Training.
Yep, and then if you could scroll down a bit.
Okay, so these are both here for first reading and we're, as I am, on the agenda next time.
Thank you.
Okay, are we on now to board committee updates? Charlie, would you like to give us some kind of an update on finances?
Sure, we got a meeting coming up the fifteenth.
Okay.
Good. And that doesn't happen since the last school board meeting, so, okay, we have much to add that are important.
Okay, very good, and.
Follow that on education. Same thing for education, we have a next meeting on ten thirteen, and nothing's happened since the last meeting.
Okay. Very good, thank.
We actually changed that one to the twelfth, so that's meeting on a non-regular night. We moved that to a Wednesday to not conflict with the open house.
Oh, wait, what open houses on that night?
What was that?
I didn't know there was an open house on that night.
Is it JGS?
Uh, yeah, yes, no, actually, uh, it's middle high school.
I thought middle high school was this Thursday. On the sixth, me too.
Let me find the email.
I think, I think that.
We we definitely moved the date for some reason.
I think it was JGS open house.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's on the twelfth instead.
I'll I'll take a look.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, five forty-five to seven o'clock. On the thirteenth is the Jaffrey Grade School Open House, and so. The twelfth, Nick, is when you said.
Yes.
That the Education Committee would is moved to as a result of that kind of conflicts.
That's still.
Lots of things going on.
Okay, very good. And, um, Charlie, what did you say the finance committee meetings on?
I think it's on the twentieth, third.
Okay.
Twentieth at one thirty.
Well, this is maybe, um, the sixth, I believe, so.
Correct.
Five for the walk to school day. And. Facilities is meeting on the seventeenth. Yeah, we have not met since the, um, afternoon. And. Is there a? Is there a goals committee meeting?
There is, yeah, there's one in October, um, in a policy meeting, both of them are later in October and not this week, so I'm not looking at it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's true.
So walk to schools, does that include faculty or is that just students?
Well, I think faculty would be involved and supervised. I I don't think our faculty from Keene is going to be required to.
I thought Ruben might just.
Put it as well.
It's getting late.
Will we walk this whole week for me?
Yeah. Right, 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 okay.
Um, not a specific standing committee, but just, uh, the board has. Uh, some dates for negotiations with JRS, say, through the month of October and November. And hopefully done by early December, but we have put five or six states down. And they're all on Wednesdays, I believe.
Right, 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 right. October twelfth, nineteenth. November second, sixteen, and thirty. Hopefully, we'll be finished by then. Certainly the plan, okay. So next, um. Board matters. We have the kidder law conference on here again, um. I don't know if anybody, yes, Nick.
Yeah, I put that back on there just because I had sent out an email to the board and I didn't get responses from everybody. Um, we're just working on trying to get anybody that wants to go signed up to go. So I just want to try to get a head count to make sure that we can actually get people there if they want to go.
Okay.
So if anybody here wants to go, if you could just let me know, like now, and then we can, uh, get you signed up. So I don't know if anybody can make it, wants to make it. I know Ruben said he's going, John, I believe you said you might be going.
Yep.
So, uh, we're working on getting those, that process going, I know there was a glitch or an issue with the website in terms of getting things signed up, but. Um, I think we got that settled as of late last week, so.
So I mean, I've been mostly about this, like, it's been, this year has been put on by the, uh, Superintendents Association. And they have all always have all these goodies, handout pens and, um, all kinds of little knickknacks and.
So, but they make sure all those vendors are there so you get the little. Squeaky, squishy stress, brains or bosses or whatever they have.
Right. You all need more of those.
I know, we we take them back.
All right, well, we'll we'll promise to come back and, uh, report on what we've learned. All right, very good, um, any future items? Anybody has? Yes.
Yeah, um, I put, we put KFR back on there just for, uh, a question to the board, um, the board made a motion to put. That updated sentence in a very specific spot. Um, after putting it in there and having some people look at the policy, there's some concern that it was sandwiched between two sentences. About different types of fees. So the question is just whether or not that either Policy Committee or the Board wants to relook at just moving that sentence down one, just so that it can reflect. All of the fees and not just a certain set of fees. Um, if I remember correctly, I'll pull it up real quick. So there there was just some discussion about some potential confusion and people thinking that they might be eligible for certain re, uh, waivers, but not for other things.
Right, so when when Trey and Leslie went through the minutes, looking at where we had put the statement about. The ability to request a waiver of the fees, they thought it was confusing to have it that way, and so. They went through and made a recommendation that's, uh. That the change could could happen.
So it just has the, um.
Since you want to just read it to us, Nick, just because it's kind of small.
Yeah, of course, let me just put it on my screen, because it's at a little bit of a distance for me. All right, so as it current reads. Uh, under fees and payments, when school buildings are used for the purpose other than for school use, additional expenses are incurred by the public school system. Therefore, a custodial fee will be charged by the hour for each event sponsored by priority, uh, priority five or six group. And then we added in the sentence, requests for a fee waiver must be approved by the school board, and then it says specific spaces also have a base fee per event. And the the question is just, do we move that sentence? After the base fee so that it applies to everything? Or is there maybe a massaging of words to make it clear that it is only for the custodial fee and not for the base fee?
Yes, I I think the intention of the board, unless unless I'm just struggling, was that all the fees could be waived.
Yeah, yeah, we, I feel, I'm fine with moving the sentence to after fee schedule periods.
Right, anybody else have any concerns about that? You just make that clarification.
Is there a motion?
Uh, no, but if you make one.
All right, I make a motion to remove, uh, request for a fee waiver must be approved by a school budget sentence. Until after the, to make it the last sentence in the paragraph.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, was. Sorry, that was Daisy, that was Daisy.
It was Kim.
Which voice I wish, I always get it wrong, thank you, thank you, Charlie. Okay, um. All those in favor signify by saying aye, uh, Charlie. Roll roll call, yeah.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Kim.
Aye.
And Daisy.
Hi.
Hi, thank you, and I say aye also, so that passes six zero. Okay.
It doesn't need to be a future item anymore.
All right, very good. So, uh, I think we're at the point where we just need one more motion.
John, I think we missed the second public comments.
Oh, you're right, you're right, we should you right past that, that is a no-no. Uh, Nick, you want to check for us and see what we?
Yeah, that's the same person that was on before, so I'll give them an opportunity to follow the same rules and opportunities in order to potentially make a public comment.
Okay.
Um, I guess while we're waiting, um, for that person to potentially do so, uh, we didn't talk about the Communication Committee during committee reports. Um, we still don't have that one last member, but I feel like we've waited long enough that we should proceed forward. And just hope that we can get participation there, we're missing the, uh, representative from the JGS staff. Um, so hopefully, we can eventually get somebody involved, maybe setting a meeting could help, um, so we're hoping to do that sometime this month. Again, first topic being website. Um, again, eight, eight active members right now out of, uh, nine total slots. Staff, um. Parent representation, school board representation, they're going to be open invites to anybody, so if anybody's passionate about a particular topic, they can come and weigh in.
Okay, great.
And I don't have anything from that person, so.
Okay, so no public comment at the moment? And then, all right, so then we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, Christine.
No, second.
And thank you, Lisa. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And, uh, great. Uh, sounds like that was six zero zero. So, thank you, everybody.
All right.
And, um, thank you, Emery.
Yeah.